Rose, for coordinating and getting this put together, at least online, for those of us who serve online. So if there's any problems, you can call in. So the first thing we're going to start this evening with is a public hearing. And this is a public hearing to consider the rezoning of 1088 South Court Street from an R3 to high-density residential to a CS commercial service. First, I'd like to call on Jonathan Mendel to give us an update about what this is. And then I'll go through those who support it and those who do not support it. So Jonathan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you said, this is a request for rezoning of 1088 South Court Street from R3 High Density Residential to CS Commercial Service. This moved before the Planning Commission on February 13th, 2020. And after reviewing the applicant's requests and staff's report, the Planning Commission recommended the requested rezoning to the City Council. It's now been through the process. The RCA, your packet, has all the Planning Commission record available to you. We had Finance Committee reviewed it on February 24th, 2020. There was the minimum 30-day public notice of this evening's public hearing. And then we have the public hearing tonight. And then there's still an ordinance review process for to continue through the legislative process. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'll call, is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? Mr. Eddie?
Yes, thank you, Council President. And thanks, just let me say generally, this is, you know, these are obviously weird times. And I thank you for your efforts in accommodating our request and keeping us on your agenda. We recognize that it's relative to what's going on. It's relatively insignificant, so we definitely appreciate it. I'm going to not, I'm going to try not to belabor our points that we've, in our arguments in support of our requests is, we've obviously been here a few times. And both this body and the Planning Commission have considered requests related to C3 commercial zoning and C1 commercial zoning at various points. As Mr. Mendel indicated, as it currently stands, the Planning Commission has recommended our request to rezone the property to a CS zoning classification, which we're requesting from the R4 classification in which we sort of arrived at after adjudicating our prior requests in some fashion and discussing the matter with the administration and hearing the various comments from the community. I do want to reiterate some, a few points, and frankly, I guess I would incorporate by reference our comments at the prior meetings. First here, as we've stated before, our request is, as we see it, is essentially to bring this property into conformance with the surrounding area. I think it's well-recognized at this point that this portion of South Court Street, as it relates to the properties on the west side, the properties to the north, which, which I'll note have an R3 classification, but that are developed commercially, as well as the property in Montville Township to the south that previously housed single-family residences until those were torn down. And that property, as well as additional property to the south in Montville Township, is slated, as I understand it, for commercial development. Effectively, this property sits as the only residential zone property in this section of South Court Street along that corridor. And the ongoing commercial development has affected the applicant's ability to utilize it for any of the permitted and conditionally permitted uses in the R3 zoning classification. I would also point out that, as it's stated in the code, it's Section 1133.01, as it relates to the CS Commercial Service District, that this is established to create an environment that is, quote, conducive to limited business service activities, and that it be located and that they be located on major thoroughfares and outline locations. I would submit to you that this property satisfies all of those different standards. It exists in an outlined commercial corridor and would be complementary to the uses in that area. We've discussed a lot about traffic in connection with our request. The residents of Pinewood, and I believe members of this body and other people providing testimony at the various hearings have noted that, that there is some relatively heavy traffic in this corridor. First, I'll state that this use doesn't, isn't designed to, or is designed to capture that traffic as opposed to being a traffic generator. And I would also point out that the fact that traffic exists in this area is really a byproduct of the fact that it has been, over the last several years, developed commercially. And the traffic itself has an equally, if not greater, effect on, on the property that's the subject of this application. It affects the applicant's ability to use it for its, its most productive use, given the, the character of this neighborhood. In closing, I would just like to again commend the city and this council for the flexi, the flexibility and the resolve shown in continuing to perform your duties during these very difficult and uncertain times. And we would request that our request to rezone 1088 South Court Street be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eddie. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in favor of the rezoning? Do we have anything from Kathy Patton? Anybody send anything in, or from Jared? No, nothing from Jared either?
No comment, no.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition of the rezoning?
President?
Mr. Shields?
I do have a statement on behalf of the Pinewood residents. They've asked me if I could read tonight to all of council. I did want to let you know that they, several of the residents in Pinewood and the surrounding area down there have sent us individual emails. They wanted to note that council to please read those emails. I also wanted to let you know, we tried the best we could, and I want to thank Jared and Matt and Miles for trying to set up the Pinewood Association to speak tonight, but in the end, it did not work, so that's why. And a reminder that Pinewood is a 64-unit condominium complex with over 100 residents. It is adjacent to this 1088 South Court Street. So I will go ahead and read the statement from the Pinewood Association here. "When the issue of zoning the lot at 1088 South Court Street first came up last April, the Pinewood Condominium Association made your objection to any commercial use of that lot was the increase in traffic congestive congestion and concern for motorist safety. We have since provided counsel with empirical reasons for our opposition. We have repeatedly asked for a traffic study of the area and expressed our concerns about the traffic safety to officials at Key Bank. Another commercial driveway in the two-tenths of a mile south of Sturbridge to newly developing Mass Parkway would be hazardous to motors as well as residents of Pinewood and Hartford Drive. The driveway would be at the crest of a rise which obstructs the view of oncoming northbound traffic on South Court, but only be 100 feet from Pinewood and opposite Hartford. We are gratified that our concerns are shared by Mayor Hanwell, the county commissioners, and Montville Township trustees, as they have all asked ODAT to do a comprehensive analysis of traffic on Route 3 south to I-76. The residents believe it would be irresponsible to consider this rezoning until the results of that traffic study are available. In his letter to ODAT, the mayor pointed out that Route 3 at the south end of Medina, due to its limited lanes and numerous points of ingress and egress, provides significant safety concerns for the motor in public as well as our safety forces. In short, there are too many driveways too close together. We were shocked that after initially refusing a rezoning request, the Planning Commission recommended approval to the CS status. The CS rezoning is not a compromise. It will still permit uses that would generate more traffic and result in an eighth commercial driveway in a narrow, heavily-traveled area of South Court. While the planning director made no recommendation at the Planning Commission meeting, the city law director recommended that the Planning Commission approve the CS rezoning request. Has the law director provided counsel with the basis for his recommendation? If so, what is it? They are asking that you must not approve this rezoning just to avoid litigation or to limit the city's liability. Our concern is the dangerous and immediate impact on an eighth commercial driveway in this narrow, short stretch of South Court Street would have on the thousand of motorists and passengers who use this busy corridor daily, as well as on our dedicated safety forces when accidents or medical incidents occur. Their safety far outweighs any plan to further commercial entity on that property. We urge you to follow the comprehensive plan and show your commitment to the general welfare of the citizens of Medina and ensure that safe, the safe and prosperous future of the historic city. Please reject the rezoning request." And they did want me to add, too, that if any of council members would like to come and pull into their unit and then try to pull out, just to see what they're talking about, is at any time of the day, but especially in the morning or at rush hour after 5:00. And when you sit there and try to turn right and you look down south on Route 3, you can see the crest of the hill that they are talking about and their concerns for having a hard time pulling out of there each day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition of the proposed rezoning? Do we have any information, Ms. Patton, from your end? How about from you, Jared?
No, no comments.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, the public hearing is closed. Now, if we'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the.
United States of America.
America.
To the republic for which it stands.
Republic for which. One.
The Constitution of Liberty and Justice.
Liberty and Justice.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Hazel Time. Hazel Time. Can't hear her.
She said here.
Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
All right, yes, you may want to redo your voice because I think you're muted out for some reason. So you may want to re-log in while we do this. Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of March 23rd, 2020 is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second?
Is there any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
She's coming back. She's attempting to re-log in.
I'm a yes if you just want to.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
And she's not back.
All right, it passes six to the. One.
Mushroom here, six here.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to this visual or virtual meeting, and we had a lot of discussion items on there. Health, safety, sanitation, Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would encourage the residents to get on our city website and listen to the updates from Mayor Hanwell, what the city is doing and following the state and federal guidelines that's placed before them. As far as any health and safety sanitation meeting, there's nothing scheduled this time. But you can, you can also log on to the Medina County Health Department and again, listen to Mayor Hanwell's presentation, which was very good for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields?
Mr. President, no meetings scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special legislation, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. No meetings scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no meeting scheduled at this time, but I do want to report that the South Broadway-Brick Street reconstruction officially starts tomorrow. It will be closed till October. A resident on the street, it's pretty crazy to get that started.
Thank you. Water Utilities, Mrs. Hazel Time?
Can I hear you now?
Yeah, I hear you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. No report. Scheduling a meeting.
Hey. I don't know what's going on at Kathy Patton's house. Can you mute your phone? It sounds like you're, there's like an earthquake over there.
I'm sorry, my battery was dying.
Oh, okay.
Hee-hoo. No reports. Going to schedule a meeting at the end of May. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Ruining Technology, Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, no meeting scheduled.
All right, we got requests for council action. Wait a second here. The problem is, I lost them. Let's see where they went. Oh, this is not good. I should have all this stuff out in front of me. So now I gotta find my request for council action because it got deleted. Bear with me one second and I'll have it. Okay, here we go. Okay. We have 2077 budget amendments. We have 2078, consider how to handle water disconnect after ordinance 6220 expires. 2079, bids for the 2020, 2021 equipment and general pavement services. 2080, we have general liability insurance renewal. We have 2081, 2020 remote technology grant project for the municipal court. 2082, agreement with Cunningham Associates, Spring Grove, and North Broadway Bridge Replacement. 2083, test order number four for Delta Airport Consultants Remark Airfield. 2084, collective bargaining agreement for the Hot Patrolmen's Benevolent Association for the patrol officers, the sergeant, and communication officers. And 2085, pandemic relief for seniors and at-risk city residents. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hanwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The COVID-19 press release review, Mr. Simpson mentioned that we have it on the website as well, but City Hall has the inner doors locked. It doesn't mean that City Hall is closed. We're just trying to cut down on some of the traffic coming through the building at the request of the Health Department. So the phone numbers are posted at the door. If you have an appointment with one of the department heads or one of the departments, they'll meet you at the door, escort you in, and we'll take care of business just, just as we would otherwise. We also have a box or a bin in the vestibules at both entrances where the doors are locked. If all you need to do is drop off something for one of the city departments, if you just leave it in that box, we'll be happy to distribute that for you. And just a reminder that the utility drop boxes have been moved over to the municipal court lot. If emergency and access is needed without an appointment, like I said, the numbers are posted on the inner City Hall doors. Essential services to constituents will be maintained, but some services will be deferred, such as fence permits, pool permits, et cetera, to limit the exposure of the public to our staff and vice versa. We apologize for any convenience, but want to keep all safe and stop the spread of the virus. I'd also like to thank Medina City Schools for sharing their laptops during their closure, which have permitted the city to authorize a number of our staff to work from home and alternate staff in and alternate staff out. There are videos on the city website, which is www.madinhoh.org for businesses and another one for residents on the local recommendations during COVID-19 pandemic. The new parking deck is still going strong just south of City Hall. This, this was erected, being supplemented by a $1 million capital grant from the state of Ohio due to our historical downtown and the numerous events and activities that draw visitors from a broad region. The deck will cost approximately $3.8 million, so the city is loaning or fronting the remaining $2.8 million. The city has established a tax increment finance district for areas adjacent and surrounding the parking deck. This means that as the new development occurs, like the old Chamber property at the southwest corner of West Friendship and North Court Street, the taxes paid for property improvements will be reimbursed to the city until all of our $2.8 million investment is repaid. So in the end, the city will own a $3.8 million parking deck with no city money used. With limited ability to build new homes in the city due to the limited lots we have available, to help increase our income tax base, the city is focusing on industrial expansions and new employers, increase in commercial, retail, and restaurants, as well as condensed housing like apartments, townhouses, et cetera, to help the tax base. Additionally, there's a group called Save the Courthouse Group that's asking for signatures to prohibit the city from spending any monies on design or construction of the combined Common Pleas Municipal Court Facility on Medina Public Square. I just want to share with the viewers, this action will not save any courthouse. It will simply make it impossible for the city to collaborate with Medina County to save tax dollars by working with the county. In essence, the engineering, design, and construction would have to happen twice. Once for the Common Pleas and then again for the Medina Municipal Court if we built two buildings within blocks of one another. More concerning is that the efficiencies of a combined courthouse for the Common Pleas and Medina Municipal Court operations will be forever lost. These include, but are not limited to, shared hallways and restrooms, shared elevators, shared security entrance, and shared meeting rooms. If the city is restricted from taking part in the project as a result of this petition, the county intends to go along with their project without us and still remove the 1969 Common Pleas courthouse, the one with the white pillars, once the new court facility is built and ready to move in. This will leave the city with the only option of either building a separate municipal court facility elsewhere or making modifications to the existing court adjacent to City Hall. The City Council, the administration, municipal judge Gary Warner, all support the combined facility and feel the savings of tax dollars for the county and city constituents as a result of this collaborative effort is well worth the undertaking. And then last but not least, last Tuesday evening, we had an extreme storm tornado come through the city. Strong storm and winds caused extreme damage to numerous homes and businesses. One resident was injured when a tree crashed through the house and injured his leg. Staff were called out late Tuesday on April 7th and worked through the night, blocking streets, cutting trees out of the roads, and assisting utility companies after trees were removed from the live power lines. All staff in the city assisted in some manner. The city was also offered help from the cities of Brunswick and Wadsworth, Medina County, and ODAT. We worked through the storm damage cleanup from Tuesday evening through Friday for two shifts each day. I'd just like to thank all the staff involved and tell them well done. I think the service director, Mino Pacoli, will have some further details in his report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you update us on the, oh, can you hear me? Am I, am I live? Can you hear?
Yeah, you're live.
Okay, because my mic doesn't say I am. Can you just update us on the current courthouse project? Has it been stalled for a little bit until we can get back together and do public meetings?
Yes, sir. The Medina County Facilities Committee has not met as a result of that. However, they, they are still working on the design and planning as we speak.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Durham, Director Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few things to report. Number one, the tax deadline for municipal taxes has been pushed back to July 15th to match with the IRS and state deadlines. The Finance Department is still open. As Mayor mentioned, City Hall is open. We just have limited access to limit the spread of the virus, but we're available to take payments over the phone and so on. And when necessary, people get escorted in, we take those as well. Water shut-offs have been, have been temporarily suspended, but we ask everyone to pay your water bill if you're able because the charges have not been suspended, just the suspensions have. And eventually, someday, we're going to get back to normal and at some point, we'll have to collect those, those funds. So try to keep current if you're, if you're at all able. On that note, the Finance Department did submit a request to council, which was discussed at the finance meeting earlier, to work out how to handle disconnections when this is eventually over and what to do with penalties and so on. So council will be acting on that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Chief. Chief Kenny? Can you hear me? I am totally disarmed. I had to log out. I'll come right back in, I guess.
John, we hear you.
Oh, does anybody? Does anybody on council hear me?
I can hear you. I hear you, but I don't hear the chief.
Okay, the chief, you're on. Okay.
I have no report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think Chief Pena's here. I don't think Mr. Marshall's here. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Wait, I think I see Ms. Marsh. Is that Ms. Marshall back there? Economic Development Director?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
A couple items to note. Thank you, Mr. President. Since the COVID pad, COVID pandemic hit, we have switched from in-person meetings with our businesses and we're now communicating with them via phone and email, basically checking on them and offering assistance from the city and answering as many questions as possible pertaining to different programs that are available to them. We've also been attending as many webinars and conference calls with various economic development groups and organizations and our state and federal elected officials to talk about what is happening and pass information along to the businesses accordingly. One of the questions that I am getting asked frequently is, what strategy does the state of Ohio have in place to start opening businesses back up? Was able to ask that question of the Lieutenant Governor via an Ohio Economic Development Association webinar call last week. And his reply is, the state of Ohio is in the process of developing a plan, and they have formed an economic advisory board comprised of company leaders across the state of Ohio that represents a variety of industry sectors. This group is being led by Frank Sullivan, chairman and CEO of the RPM Corporation, right here, located right here in Medina County. The key to opening businesses will be, when do we see a peak in the COVID-19 cases in Ohio? And when will we start to see that a reduction as they are trying to not overwhelm our healthcare system? So we'll just have to stay tuned on that group as they meet and more information is available. Also, Ohio Governor Mike DeWine announced the establishment of the Ohio Manufacturing Alliance to fight COVID-19. This is a collaborative public-private partnership that will coordinate efforts to provide healthcare workers, first responders with personal protective equipment. The alliance includes the Ohio Manufacturers Association, Hospital Association, Magnet, Nursing Home Organizations, Jobs Ohio, and the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, Development Services Agency, and the Department of Health. The alliance is working to identify and match the critical needs of Ohio's healthcare system with the companies willing and able to repurpose their production to meet those needs. Manufacturers that can help should visit the repurposingproject.com website for more information. And there's a short survey for companies to fill out. The survey's like seven questions and then their contact information. We have shared that information locally with our manufacturing companies, and we are working with several companies that are converting their operations to make personal protective equipment. One example is, in the city of Medina, is fire ducts. They are. They are manufacturing, manufacturer of turnout gear for firefighters. They are now making reusable gowns for our healthcare industry folks. Fire Dex is in the process of manufacturing the gown and they aim to make 100,000 of those in the next few months. Additionally, we are working with Spray Products, another manufacturing company, to convert to making an aerosol hand sanitizer spray. We were able to help get them connected to the federal, or I'm sorry, the Food and Drug Administration for this approval and we thank our federal legislators for their assistance with making this happen in a timely fashion. Additionally, some of our smaller businesses like Fabric Obsession and Yazna Tailoring are making fabric face cloths and selling them on their websites and on Facebook. I also get asked a lot about, you know, what are essential and a lot of our companies are deemed essential because they are either making a protective equipment product or something in a supply chain in an essential industry. And the state of Ohio is following the guidelines of the National Homeland Security and so many companies have defense contracts or contracts with the Department of Navy, Department of Energy, and so therefore those companies are deemed essential. We talked a little bit, the mayor mentioned worklocal.net. There are many companies despite this COVID pandemic that are still hiring and as we find out about those opportunities, we are getting them loaded into worklocal.net. We are also sharing those opportunities in our weekly newsletter. The newsletter is going out to 1,600 people that have subscribed and we have almost 5,000 Facebook followers, so we are putting that information out on Facebook as well. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to switch to Mr. Worley. Do you have a report to Parks and Recreation Director?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to remind residents that our parks are all open and we're continuing to ask park users to maintain social distancing even while playing tennis. Our skate park, our sea raceway and our basketball courts are closed due to some concerns we've had with social distancing. Until further notice, we will make sure to update our Facebook page accordingly when we're ready to open up all the amenities. I would like to echo what Mayor Hamwell said about the collaborative efforts of the city during the cleanup of the storm last Tuesday evening. It was truly amazing to be out in the field and see all the teams come together to serve our residents as quick as possible. Lastly, I did want to note that our Forester Department will begin working on their spring tree planting soon. You might see some trees laying in the tree lawns around town. We're planning on installing around 55 trees throughout the city, mostly replacements. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladish, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. Because of the physical separation requirement, we've made some temporary changes to the building department's plan review and building permit approval process. Most applications and approvals, about 80% of them, can be handled by email and telephone. Payments can also be made by telephone with a credit card. All applications are available on the city's website. They can be filled out and printed or we can email a copy to the applicant. The building department is still open to the public by appointment or by coming to City Hall once inside the lobby column for assistance.
Is it just me or did that cut out for everyone?
Yeah, I think you're cut out, Mr. Gladish. I don't know if, maybe Jared, shut your mic off.
Jared?
Not now. Oh, there you go. You're back.
The storm damage information from last Tuesday storm, both the fire and building departments visited 45 sites with moderate to severe structural damage. Thirty-five residential, which includes 15 with trees through the roofs, 10 commercial. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Gladish. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to expand on what Councilman Heffinger said about South Broadway, the project is scheduled to start officially tomorrow. I'd like to remind residents that South Broadway will be closed, has been closed, through traffic till the end of the project, which is early October. It will, of course, remain open to local traffic. Due to the circumstances, we were not able to hold a public meeting or open house like we typically do. We did, however, send an informational letter with a frequently asked questions section to all property owners and residents. If anybody has any further comments or questions, we always encourage you to call us, email us. We'll respond very quickly. Just call the Engineering Department at 722-9034. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Like the other folks have reported, I wanted to acknowledge our staff, specifically Jansen Worley, all our supervisors, the superintendents, the foremen, and a special thanks to the service crews, both Jansen's staff, our staff, sanitation, water, streets, they all worked collaboratively in an effort to pick up all the debris. With respect to the yard waste program, the tornado actually initiated our program early. So we started Wednesday, April 8th, and to date we picked up 600 yards of debris, tree branches and storm damage. So that's equal to about 120 tons. We're going to continue with the yard waste program through November 30th and that concludes my report. So again, a great effort in a short amount of time. PD and Fire also, we worked with them collaboratively on every disaster like we just had. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe I didn't miss anybody. Is there anybody else that I missed? Notices, communications, petitions, we have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have admitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments should be directed at the chair in a reasonable time limit. Five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group of speakers, speakers should approach the, I guess it's the rear right microphone, say their name and address so it can be added in the minutes. Members of the public before the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting is determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody in the retatta that wishes to speak? Any other things?
Mr. President, if I could for a second?
Yes.
You might, we might need to take a short recess for you to reboot. We're not picking up your camera any longer, so I don't know if you want to take a second reboot yourself to get back into the meeting?
All right, well, I'll ask if there's anybody, look online on your Facebook and see if you have anybody there. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to spend the rule regarding the three readings?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion pass with 7-0.
Order 64-20, ordinance amending chapter 1331 and chapter 133101 of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio relative to the number of people in Ohio for one, two and three family dwellings.
Approved. Second?
Discussion, Mr. Gladish?
Thank you, Mr. President. The state of Ohio recently adopted a new version of the residential building code. Because the city of Medina is a certified department, we are required to follow and adapt this code.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on adopting the residential code? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
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 Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Order 64-20, pass the 7-0.
Order 65-20, ordinance amending section 133101 of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio relative to the adoption of the 2017 National Electric Code.
Approved. Second?
Discussion, Mr. Gladish?
The state of Ohio recently adopted a new version of the National Electric Code for residential projects. Because the city of Medina is a state-certified department, we are required to adopt this electrical code.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Order 65-20, pass the 7-0.
Order 66-20, ordinance authorizing law director to prepare the necessary documentation for the transfer of city. This order 66 is going to be tabled. We have to add additional information that wasn't in the ordinance regarding the payback to the city of Medina. We talked about this, but it wasn't added into the ordinance and we will do that. So this will come back on April 27th, I think our next council meeting is, to talk about the reimbursement for the cost of the city to purchase the land originally back, I think it was like 2000 or 1999 or 2001. So we're going to table order 66-20. So we have order 67-20, ordinance amending number, ordinance number 12917, passed September 11th, 2011, relative to an amendment to the fire service contract between the city of Medina and Montville Township.
Second?
Discussion, Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the city of Medina entered into a fire contract with Medina Township, rather, and because it was entered mid-year, it would have expired on July 13th, 2020. We would like for the benefit of the Finance Department, the city and the township to have this extended until December 31st, 2020, which will then line it up with the three-year fire contract that we have in existence with Montville, having them both start and end on the same dates.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Order 67-20, pass the 7-0.
Order 68-20, ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12020 Chevy Malibu who, from Ganley of Aurora, for the police department.
Approved. Second?
Discussion, Chief Kenny? Your mic's not working. Still not working. There you go. Now you're working.
Hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is for a statement vehicle for Detective Bureau.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance? The clerk is frozen.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Order 68-20, pass the 7-0.
Order 69-20, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Ohio Regional Development Corporation for the administration of the fiscal year 2020 Community Housing Impact and Preservation CHIP Program.
Approved. Second?
Discussion? Mr. President? Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause has been requested to be added at this. My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Mendel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is to execute a contract with Ohio Regional Development Corporation, ORDC, to be our professional consultant for the administration of a future PY2020 CHIP program in partnership with the city of Brunswick. Basically, as part of their consultant services, they'd be paid upwards of $74,000 out of the total approximately $700,000 that the city of Medina and the city of Brunswick would receive if we were granted a CHIP program by the state of Ohio in the next coming rounds. The emergency clause is requested as the CHIP application is due May 20th, 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause? Frozen again.
We're just going to have to call our Elsa.
Okay, call the role, sorry. Emergency clause?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion pass the 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Order 69-20, pass the 7-0.
Order 70-20, ordinance amending ordinance number 18719, passed November 25th, 2019, amendments to the 2020 budget and the 2020 carry forward. Mr. Shields, we can't hear you.
Approved. Second?
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is unspent appropriations from 2019. We're appropriating back to those departments that didn't spend them.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance to approve the carry forward? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Order 70-20, pass the 7-0.
Order 71-20, ordinance amending ordinance number 420, passed January 13th, 2020, relative to bids and ordering a contract for the 2020 concrete pavement general services program. Second? Okay, now we're here again. Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This program, our annual concrete services program, is used primarily for our sidewalk repair program. When putting together our sidewalk repair program, we realized we had enough work that we had to ask for this increase, $160,000.
That's good. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Order 71-20, pass the 7-0.
Order 72-20, ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the public square mid-block crossing project.
Approved. Second?
Discussion, Mr. Who's taking this one? Mr. Patton?
Yes. Yeah, this project will produce an improvement to pedestrian safety at the four mid-block crossings around the square. This project is being primarily funded through a state.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Order 72-20, pass the seven zero.
Order 73-20, in order to amending ordinance number 18719, passed November 25th, 2019, amendments to the 2020 budget.
Will it be approved?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a grant that we received. We need to appropriate the money. It'll pass through, but we need to appropriate it to be able to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Simpson, we didn't hear you. Denny?
Yes.
Hazel, Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Order 73-20, pass the seven zero.
Order 74-20, in order to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with USI Insurance Services LLC for the city's property and general liability insurance for the period of April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021.
Approved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved it added at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause. Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city was notified of this contract on the day after our last council meeting, which was March 24th. And it took effect on April 1st, 2020. So we had to bind our old contract, which means carry it over until we could get this passed. So the reason for the emergency clause is it got to us so late that it took effect seven days later. We have asked them to try to get it to us to avoid this, having to go from finance council with the emergency clause. But in this case, they were trying to shop it and all the increase that we saw. And they explained that most of the increase is because of market trends in the general liability and property. But a small amount is due to claims history for the city, so we're trying to control that as best we can.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passed with seven zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Order 74-20, pass the seven zero.
All right, council comments. I guess I have a first council comment because I never get to go first. I wanted to mention this at the beginning of the meeting, but since this is the first virtual meeting, it was a little tough to remember everything. But I just want to take this time, and I think on behalf of council, to thank all the first responders and those working at the front of the line, so to speak, at the hospitals, taking care of all the sick, not only in Medina County in Ohio, but throughout the country. It is a very risky job to go to work every day knowing that you're being exposed to a virus that could be deadly. But these people go every day without any complaints, and they represent us well. Not only the first responders, both in police and fire, but also those at the hospitals, again, the nurses and doctors, who every day take their life in their own hands, so to speak, by addressing those who are sick with the virus. I'd also like to take this moment and, you know, have a little pray for those people who have lost people during this pandemic, and also those who are sick. It's something that nobody would like to get, it's something that we have to go through. But I think that, at the end of the day, hopefully, we will learn a lot of lessons from what we're doing. With that said, I just hope that everybody stays safe and healthy until our next council meeting. Is there anybody else that has any council comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. What you said is exactly how I'm feeling too. I'm thankful for all those people working at the hospitals. But I'm also really thankful for our city workers that have done an outstanding job over this past week when we were hit with that storm. This, all of the city, there was downed trees, power lines, houses with damage. I'm so thankful there weren't more people hurt because it was nasty out. But it was amazing to see our city come together. I saw so many neighbors out there. It's interesting that I met a ton of neighbors during a tornado and a pandemic at the exact same time. But, you know, walking around the neighborhood, checking on some people, it was it was good to see everybody out there helping each other remove the trees and whatnot, and the city workers out there day after day after day, cleaning up all those limbs and all those power lines, well, everything that we needed to do. So thank you to the city workers, thank you to the first responders out there, thank you to everybody that put their time into it, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo what you and Mr. Heffinger said. Again, it never ceases to amaze me, the cooperation from all our department heads, starting at the top with the mayor, all our department heads, all the city workers, how they come and work together through a tragedy like this. When it was a tragedy, when you look at property loss and damage, and when people are so fearful, anyhow, with the pandemic going on, to have this take place also. Hats off to Dan Gladys and the extra work that he put in. Ohio Edison, I mean, they were out there hour after hour after hour getting our residents' power restored. We all know, we watch every year on television, the storm damage done around the country, and our hearts go out to people. And even though the tornado that passed through our city was only an F1, it still interrupted so many people's lives, and still at this point, there's still people that's fighting to get their life back to normal. But thanks, hats off to all the city employees. You know, every year, council gets together with the administration and some local business leaders and so forth. And we try to have an appreciation party for our city workers. I think this year, we're going to have to do an exceptional job, once the pandemics lifted and we can get back together, because, boy, hats off to everybody. And I hope everybody stays healthy by listening to the governor and the mayor. It looks like the pandemic, the curve is starting to level out a little bit. So maybe in the near future, whether that be, you know, May, June, July, we'll be able to start getting our lives somewhat back to normal. And just God bless everybody. I think that we've all worked together and will continue to do this. Our lives will be changed forever, just like it was after 9/11, just like it was after Pearl Harbor. Things will change, but it'll be for the better. And just remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hazelton?
You know it. Two things, I just want to echo what everyone else said. You know, everybody's done a super fantastic job, our first responders through the coronavirus, through the pandemic. With the storm, Ward 1 got a wall up, and it was so refreshing. I spent most of Wednesday walking around the ward and driving around because I'm not that fit. And checking and seeing, and everybody was helping each other, everybody was out talking to each other. And I know that the rest of Medina was doing the same thing, so it was really refreshing to see that. But one thing I thought about before tonight's meeting that I really wanted to get across, that a lot of people aren't talking about, because unfortunately, there's still stigma surrounding it, but it's mental health. And it's really hard, really, really hard during this pandemic. Bill had mentioned, Mr. Lamb had mentioned earlier, about being alone in your home, not seeing anybody. And it's really, really hard, and that's okay. It's okay that this is our new normal. And if all you did today was get up and take a shower, and then you sat back down, that's okay. It's okay to be depressed right now because it's a totally unprecedented situation. And it's okay for help. I anticipate that there's going to be a lot of mental health issues during this time because it is, like I said, a new normal. So I want people to know I'm struggling, probably everyone is struggling. It is really, really hard. There's nothing to be ashamed of. And that GuideStone and Alternative Paths both are doing telecounseling. I will post links on my Facebook Council page after this to resources you can use, even if you just want to talk to somebody. Social interaction is way different now. I think I mentioned last time I had been doing my coffee group where we were like 12 feet apart in the parking lot. That has saved my sanity. But I also have a group of friends where we did Cards Against Humanity on Zoom. So just doing those things online, seeing people's faces, interacting, that social aspect is so important. So just make sure that you're taking care of your mental health as well. It's important to stay six feet away and put your mask on and practice social distancing. But it's even more important to take care of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. First of all, I echo the sentiments of everybody here before me with regard to our frontline and first responders. They're doing a phenomenal job, and they truly are. In the old days, they called them the cannon fodder of the war, and this is a war. And they are doing a great job, and I don't know that I could do it. It takes a special person, and God bless every one of them. And the mental health, I have to agree with you there, Jessica. You have to take care of that. So I'm going to go down a little different path. Today, I took a trip down Lake Road and Commercial Drive and those areas there, just to see, for those of you who do want a job, we've got a multitude of companies right here in town. You don't have to leave the city limits to apply for jobs in the industrial area. You've got Carlisle, Agrati, Spray Products, JMT, and Sandridge all looking for jobs. From a retail standpoint, you've got Drug Mart, Bueller's, Marx, and Dollar General. And as I said before, the state website has over 40,000 jobs posted. So please, if you need a job, go look in these places here. They are hiring. And there are a few truck driving companies too. Not exactly sure what they need, but those are available to you too. That definitely would help your financial situation, definitely would help your mental health situation. So please look into that. If you want a more complete list, please contact me. My information is on the website. I'll be glad to help you out with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shields, do you have anything?
I tried to get in there right after you, but everybody beat me to it. So there's nothing I can add other than what everybody's already said. I do appreciate the storm cleanup. Ward 4 and Ward 3 took heavy hits, and I just was amazed at the city's employees, the fire, police, everybody was on there. I saw, it was my garbage day. I saw the sanitation workers come by my house at 8:00. They were back probably five more times that day that I saw them picking up things on cleanup, just everybody, but a team effort. I know Brunswick and Wadsworth offered to help us out too, and I'm just really appreciative. Denny's right, we owe everybody here a great debt of gratitude. Maybe we'll arrange a parade of our cars to drive by and thank everybody for the work they've done there. I know that's the popular thing right now for birthdays, but we need to do it for our employees and let them know how much we appreciate the job they did. And with that, I'll go into, I need to make a motion for executive session here. And at 8:36, I'll make a motion to conference with the law director of the city concerning disputes involving the city that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
Second.
Before we vote on the motion, I know Bill Lamb is out there. Bill, do you have anything to add before we vote? To vote in executive session?
No, you know, it's fine, Jim. Everybody's said everything, I think. Medina always does a great job, you know, even in the most difficult of circumstances, and these are really tough times. And everything that everybody does to make them better for anybody is, just makes it that little bit better. So thanks to everybody who's done so much, so much to make this not quite as tough as it really is. And I'm in the dark, so I'm going to disappear here in about five minutes. I don't feel light.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Coyne, I'd want to add that also the mayor and the law director would be joining us.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to recess into executive session?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazelton.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passed with seven zero.
We'll be recessed into an executive session. We'll be coming out of executive session, taking no action from any item discussed in the executive session. And with that said, the meeting is adjourned.